I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we finish the flag, we do congratulate Spain.
Ole.
Ole.
Okay, first, second on the agenda changes to order agenda. Mr. Weiss, any changes?
We have no changes, thank you.
No changes. Reports from closed session.
Mr. Lanzon. This is deja vu.
I used to say that.
Nothing to report, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, communication and announcements. Start with Mr. Klein, anything?
For once, I have nothing. Mr. Mayor, I would like to remind folks that there is the, the city of San Carlos, Redwood City and Belmont together have a leadership class. Starts in September. Applications are going on at this point in time. If folks are interested in this course, the class meets once a month. I believe it's on the second Friday of the month. It's an all day.
Second Friday?
And through the year, the course will describe everything from economic development to land use, to health care, to education. And it's really an advanced civics class for, for folks in San Mateo County. It's well attended. There's about 40 people that will be in the class. Again, it is open. If people are interested, please contact me through, through the county, city email system, and I'm happy to get you an application.
Great, thank you. Mr. Gropot, any comments?
Yeah, just one. I wanted to give further recognition to a little fella. His name's J.T. Eden.
Wait a minute.
And, oh, you want to take this? Okay. So Bob and I will do this together.
First half?
J.T.'s a student. He's eight years old. He's from Rundle Elementary School. And this little guy put together a volunteer group called Planet Protectors. And for more than that, just his attitude, and he's very helpful in his classroom and so forth. So his teacher nominated him for this award that Hasbro gives out, and he won. So just thought we'd give some recognition to, to this little guy. Again, his name is J.T. Eden. And, Mr. Mayor, maybe we want to consider having him here at the council meeting sometime, and we can give him a little recognition in an official manner. That's it.
I'll just add, Mr. Gropot stormed my thunder here, but that's okay. I don't have a problem. He gets $1,000 scholarship for college. And hopefully, if invested widely, since he's only eight years old, he might have a few more than $1,000. But as Mr. Gropot indicated, it's a Community Action or Hero Awards is a partnership between Hasbro and the Points of Light Institute to have a situation for young people from kindergarten through high school to give back through volunteering. And again, congratulations to J.T. Eden.
And people can join his club if they're interested.
Yeah, that's right, they can.
Thank you, that's all right, Mr. Mayor. So I have, I have two items. You may have missed the first one, but there's four more to go, and that is our summer concert series. We started off, of course, after the Fourth of July last Friday, every Friday from 6 till 8 p.m. at Burton Park. This next Friday is called Bing Bang Beat. Go on the website, check them out and so forth. But they'll be there and bring the kids, bring the seniors, everybody. That's a great event. Also, I'm pleased to, to announce here that we, during closed session, a little bit of, I guess, Agenda 3 moving to 4, but it is an announcement. We were always fortunate to have several very, very qualified candidates interview for our commissions. We do have one opening on planning. We closed sessions before the meeting. We did interview all eight.
Open session.
Open session, I'm sorry, open session. Yeah, that's right, open session. I'm pleased to announce that Scott Marsters is our new planning commission. Scott, congratulations. And for the other candidates, really, really appreciate to keep, keep on and keep volunteering. There's plenty of needs in the city, and thank you. I see some great smiles out there. Thank you for your, your time here and your efforts in being involved with our city. Next, I have two presentations actually to make. We have our business, Bay Area Green Business Certification. We'll do that. And I'll also be doing our Park and Rec. This is the month for Parks and Rec. So let me do that on the floor there. Along with CMTA Gaming and a lot of other government agencies that I'll say through and reading, basically have certified all these businesses today. Whereas green business programs, successful partnership in the city and county with ABAD or local Bay Area utilities and agencies that assist, they recognize, promote businesses and government agencies that operate voluntarily in a more environmentally responsible way. Whereas to be certified as a green business, participants and their firms must comply with all the regulations to meet Bay Area previous standards for conserving resources, preventing pollution, and minimizing waste and helping businesses improve and implement green practices for their operations. Whereas Rethink Waste has successfully completed the extensive green business checklist, been reviewed, the certification process, and is now a certified Bay Area Green Business operating in the city of San Carlos. So therefore, I proclaim it, Randy Horsley of City of San Carlos, that Rethink Waste is hereby committed for obtaining the certification as the San Carlos Certified Bay Area Green Business this 12th day of July 2010. To you, thank you very much. We have, also from the state of California, we have our Senator Joe Semenin certification of recognition to Rethink Waste. And, and also from Assemblymember Iver Ruskin, a certification of recognition for Rethink Waste. So hopefully you have a little bit more. There's a new building going on down there. Maybe there'll be some more wall space on it, and we'll be able to get these things up. So, thank you very, very much. And one other item, the July 4th has occurred. The weather's warm. What do you think most about is our parks? And if I could have Doug along, are you coming up for this one? I'm very pleasure to, Doug, welcome, to recognize this is Park and Recreation Month. You picked one of the longest days months with the longest days, right?
That's right.
Is that why you did that? So let, let me, a lot of items here, but, but let me hit a few I think are most important. Parks and Recreation makes lives and communities better now and in the future. And whereas 98% of California households indicated they have visited a park in the last year, we're going to prove that. We're going to ask everybody that leaves here, they walk north through our, our city hall park, that's a park, we'll get that percentage up to 99% by the end of the evening. Whereas we provide access to this serenity and the inspiration of nature and outdoor spaces to play and exercise. We foster human development, provide positive alternatives for children and youth during non-school hours to reduce crime and mischief, thereby helping children and youth develop and grow to healthy and productive adults. Our Park and Rec programs offer places, spaces, programs to facilitate social connections, human development, therapy, the arts, and lifelong learning. Let's see here. Whereas thousands of San Carlos children, adults, and seniors benefit from a wide range of services, facilities, and programs, including the award-winning Youth Center. It's a very special place in San Carlos. This year, the first ever, or last year was in October, first ever Godwin Walk, which Park and Rec and the Chamber had a lot to do with. The Senior Lunch Program, and the newly renovated our Burton Park with various sophisticated play structures, all provided by our Parks and Rec Department. So it's, City of San Carlos urges all its residents to recognize that Park and Recreation enriches the lives of its residents and visitors, as well as adding the value to the community homes and neighborhoods. So now, therefore, proclaim that I, Randy Horsley of City of San Carlos, declare, Parks Make Life Better. And the month of July 2010 is Parks and Recreation Month, and indeed so urge all citizens to enjoy our parks and recreational opportunities this 12th day of July 2010. Mr. Long, thank you very, very much. Okay, on to item six, public comment. This is reserved, people, encourage people. If they want to talk or speak on any item that's not on this evening's agenda, they would be welcome to do so. Have one here, Robert Stafford. Before you sit down, Robert, welcome. And anybody else who would like to speak would be welcome after Robert. Again, if you limit your comments to two minutes. Thank you, Robert.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to compliment Mayor, council members, on the policy initiatives that you guys took with the issue of how are we going to maintain some balance with law enforcement. Richard Florida wrote a similar book called The Rise of the Creative Class. Truly, you guys are part of that demographic move of policymakers looking at fresh solutions to really crushing problems. There's no question that this is the right choice. It's an open question with what the results are going to be. But one of the results that we do have is a long history of excellence of the Sheriff's Department, from McDonald to Hartman, McGuire, Durner, Horsley, and our current sheriff. I think we're in good hands. But it's an open question, but it's a question we have to go into. What's not an open question right now is that this town collects in lieu fees. We collect in lieu fees that aren't being used. We've got a school district suing us for money that they want. We have a school district that has budget problems, that has problems with housing teachers. An open question should be a dialogue with the school district about how those lands might be used for housing. When you look at Mountain View, and you look at what Al Savay did when he was in Mountain View, it's a very strong statement as to what staff can do when they're unleashed. Mark Sawicki's done a great job since he started here. We have a social responsibility for below-market rate inclusionary housing. And I think the forces that are generated the decision on the police can move us in a different direction in this regard. So when you look at yourself, look at what Richard Florida said so many years ago in The Rise of the Creative Class, and today the challenge is, let's find another thing we can focus in on and bring these skills to fruitation. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak? Ms. Bell, please?
I'm sure you're not surprised that I disagree about the police department. You care so much about the people that you have now bullied them into saying, yes, we want to go with the sheriff. That's a great idea. And there are many other creative ways to solve this problem besides dumping your public safety employees. That's not the only solution. Mark Weiss brought you two paths, and you chose one of them. You have not looked at the myriad other possible ways to do this. You have a Parks and Rec Director pulling down a Director's salary, and he has, what, 12 employees? Come on. We should outsource the whole Parks and Rec Department to Belmont. They have a thriving Parks and Rec Department, and their budget is lower for their thriving one than ours is for our stripped-down, blast-ditch Parks and Rec Department. So I, I completely, I don't know how Bob Stafford got from outsourcing police to let me build housing everywhere in San Carlos, but I don't agree with the police. There are a lot of other ways that that could have been corrected. You're saving the necks of desk jockeys on the backs of public safety employees.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, please, come on up. Hang on one second. Okay, thank you. Please.
Brian Murdo, I live in San Carlos, lived here for 40 years. Once again, I'll say it, regarding the fire department and rescue people, I want the best, not the cheapest. Not only do I want it, I expect it from you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Anybody else? We'll move on to our item seven is the consent calendar, consent calendar items considered to be routine and be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request that items be removed for separate action. Counsel, any items here have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, respectfully ask that we remove item H, please.
Okay.
And F.
Okay.
And the two above, F and G.
And, Mr. Gropot?
F and G.
F and G.
F and G. Mr. Mayor, I move approval of consent calendars, item A through E, and I and J. Second. Okay, motion second. Gropot?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gropot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Okay, let's, looking at the agenda, let me look at here, see what we could do. Yeah, let's, let's go through these. Mr. Gropot, F and G are in that order. Can we, you brought those up, can we go through those right now?
Well, F is, let me just explain to the public here, authorizing one-year extension of a lease with South Bay Waste Management Authority for office space at the library at 610 Elm Street. Mr. Gropot?
Sure. The question I had on that is, looks like we're continuing the lease at the same rate that we've been at. Actually, Mr. Mayor, I was going to be curious to see our discussion on fees, where that goes. Because, you know, on the one hand, there's a recommendation to raise our fees by a certain percentage. And yet, with this square footage cost on this lease agreement, no recommendation for an increase. And I'm just curious, it doesn't seem to be equitable.
Okay, so if I could have someone maybe from staff, Mark O'Brien, respond on the reason on the flat.
Sure. As you know, the last couple leases that you've seen have been at the same rate, and that's because the leases that we executed the last three to five years had an annual cost of living at this point, given the economy. The, in talking with Mark Sawicki, they seem a little on the high side. And as you'll note, in this particular instance, this particular tenant has not elected to renew for another three to five years. They've only elected to renew for one year. So staff has some concern, even at this level, whether we'll be able to retain the tenants. But that's our recommendation to you.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments on this item?
I think it's just indicative of the economy. Most people who are leasing are asking for lower rates right now. So if we can get the same money we got last year, that's pretty good.
Okay. Ask for a motion then, on F.
Approval item 7F.
Second. My second. Gropot?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gropot?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Roy?
Yes. G is extended managers contract, authorizing lower Highlands Field renovation project to July 12, 2010. Mr. Gropot, again, if you could give us comments on that?
Sure. And, you know, typically when a council vote is divided on an issue, it doesn't show up on the consent calendar. I had voted no on this project, and so I pulled it because to stay consistent, I'm voting no again.
Okay. I'm moving, other discussion? Mr. Klein?
No, I'm moving approval of item 7G.
Second. Okay. Motion and second. Gropot?
Councilmember Ramon?
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gropot?
No.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Okay. 7H, Mr. Griselli. This is to amend contract with North Star Decimation Strategies for Economic Development Marketing Services.
Mr. Mayor, I pulled this item because I felt it was, I don't know, I had a difficult time understanding how you can have a contract with someone to provide a service and a report, and then not have them come and give the report. I don't know whether it was an oversight in our contract, or if it was an extra thing that we added on. It seemed, I don't know where the ball got dropped or where the slice is. I am hopeful that if, if this is approved, I don't think I'll be running for it, but if it is approved, that whoever comes to speak to us will not just read the report. Because for $3,000, I don't need somebody to read to me. So this is the difficulty I have with this. I mentioned it to the city manager today, as well as the mayor, as well as to Mr. Savay, my difficulty with this item. And I just think it's, it's not so much even the dollars, it's just the principle that not to have someone come and give us the report. It just seems completely foreign to me to pay extra for that part of it. So that's my, that's my comment.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Griselli, I'm going to get you up here to answer any questions. Mr. Gropot?
I did have some comments, and I did have a question. It mentions in the last paragraph on the page, the cover page of 7H, about the creative committee is ready to make a recommendation. Who is the creative committee?
Good evening, all the mayor, members of the city council. To get to your question, Councilmember Gropot, the creative committee is made up of members of the Economic Development Advisory Commission. We have Steve Tabachek, Ron Collins, who is actually wearing a couple of different hats, because Ron Collins also sits on the chamber board, and Gary Weisenger, who is the because Ron Collins also sits on the chamber board, and Gary Weisinger, who is the board chair of EDAC. We have Louise Delamajora, who is also on the chamber board, and myself and Mark Sawicki. So it was agreed upon, EDAC picks some members, the chamber picked a member to represent them, and so it's a group of people to work more in-depth with the consultant. EDAC as well has been working on this in a very in-depth way as well. There's been a number of different presentations and reports given, and I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
So, Mr. Savay, can you, Mr. Griselli brought up some good points here. Can you kind of elaborate on the need, I mean, can the value, the report stand on its own, the value of having the consultant travel out here and pay for these additional costs and so forth? Or are there other ways, you know, the value of the report should stand on its own, yet there may be questions during the evening that we may want to ask, are you prepared, are you, or Mark Sawicki, or can the consultant be available on the phone or something? Have you thought of other ways to do this and still satisfy our needs and the points that Mr. Griselli brought up? Do you have any ideas there?
Yeah, I mean, we've talked with the consultant about different ways to do this, and I guess just to back up a little bit and provide a little more explanation, I mean, really, you know, this is a very unique process for any city, a marketing and branding campaign, especially in these, in these times. And since the very beginning of the process, there's been really sort of an ongoing debate about how to present this to the community, who to present it to, and who should decide in the end about rollout, you know? And so while perhaps a creative, and cities across the country do it many different ways, and our consultant has advised us that, you know, creative committees do this, sometimes it's staff, sometimes the council does get involved. The other issue here is, some of this, you don't want it to go, you don't want to go public too early with it either, because then you have 1,000 people commenting on a very subjective subject matter. So really, there has been a lot of debate. The analysis and the study of this is, you'd be surprised at the amount of market research that went into it. EDAC has taken a very close look. So we've sort of exhausted our resources at the very end here, and so the debate at the end with the creative committee is, yeah, we could go ahead and say, hey, this is it, and sort of push it out there, but really, I think everybody agrees that it should be the city council that should look at this and have a discussion or a dialogue with the consultant. And then you think about how that dialogue should take place, and I personally think it should be a face-to-face dialogue with the city council. I think you should see the person, you should talk to them, they're the experts. Now, we have done this with our creative committee and others through the computer, and so we could do it that way, and you could save the travel costs. And the consultant is available to do that, but it's a totally different dynamic when you do it that way. So we could do it, save $1,000 or something on travel costs, perhaps a little bit more, but I would prefer to see, if it was me, I'd prefer to see the person get into a dialogue, and that's the intent of this, not just to read slides, but to tell you in-depth how the information was gathered and how this decision came about.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Savay up there, any? Mr. Griselli, any other thoughts?
No, I appreciate, again, I appreciate, Mr. Savay, we had a conversation this afternoon, also with Mr. Weiss, I appreciate all the work that's been put into this. I just, it's just, it's just hard for me to understand how that wasn't included in the first part, to show up and give the report. I can't believe that if for some reason we didn't pay them, I don't know, we don't get the report, or whatever, it's just, this gentleman better be, all I can say is, my little numbing going to be here. That's all I can tell you, because I'm sure it's going to be a great report, and if it isn't.
For the chair, I just, I would like to say that, I mean, this whole process, I think, has been a bit more extended than what we had originally planned. And part of that is a product of trying to figure out the proper process to go through, and who all should be involved in that process. Part of it is trying to find a proper time to bring it to the city council. I mean, it's a marketing and branding program that's intended to identify what this community is all about, reflect that somehow in all of the documentation and materials that we put forward in the future. I mean, we think it's a very critical and important part of trying to identify and create the feel that is appropriate for the community. Obviously, we'd like to bring it forward to the council for some discussion with some alternatives, rather than bringing it forward as a theoretically finished product, which we discussed at the staff level and could do, but we thought it would be better, because it is so important, and it will have such a ramification for all of our collateral materials moving forward, that the council have an opportunity to meet with the consulting firm who is helping us put this together. In terms of, you know, responsibility, I'll take the fall for it, if you will, in terms of any concerns the council might have relative to this specific recommendation. I've asked that the consultant be brought here to have that kind of dialogue and interaction with the city council, to afford you that opportunity. I still think it's the right thing to do. I'm not, not real sure in terms of when the right time is to bring it forward. You know, there's been a lot of contentious meetings, and, you know, this, again, is supposed to be something that wraps up what this community is all about, and is something that we can market ourselves to people beyond the borders of San Carlos. It should, you know, represent what this community is all about, but it should also be something that will attract others, I think, to come here and share that ambiance and hopefully spend some dollars in this community.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, just offer that as the rationale for it. Again, the timeframe for this whole project has been longer than we anticipated, and perhaps we should have had the forethought before we entered into the contracts to have this final phase and not have spent the money that we've spent with the EDAC or the like on other, on our other aspects of the project. But we are where we are, and I think that the money to bring this particular consultant here would be money well spent. And I will say that beyond this, I just want to make sure the council's fully aware that there is an implementation phase. Then once you have your documents, and once you have your collateral materials in terms of the branding materials somewhat identified, there's a lot more that goes into a marketing and branding program. And there will be additional consulting dollars. We'll have to discuss whether or not we do another RFP for the implementation. There was some thought about another firm that we thought was local that would be prepared to carry the ball forward from here. It looks like, you know, that that may not be as possible as what we had originally hoped, but.
That's look design.
That's look, that's correct. That may not be able to pick the ball up right where we are, and so there was even some thought about using this particular consultant for that additional work. We haven't made that determination in terms of what our recommendation will be to the council, but no one should be thinking that, you know, we're at a point that this is finished. This is simply the next step. It's an important step. We think you ought to have the full advantage of the experts that were brought on board to create these documents when you make the decision. And again, you know, if there's blame to be placed, I would accept that responsibility.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I just want to make it perfectly clear that I'm not, I'm not against the concept of having a gentleman here. What I'm against, what I'm really frustrated at is that even on his side, I am shocked that his contract would be drawn up. He had to know he was going to come and give this thing. I can't believe he doesn't do this all the time, and I'm very surprised. And so that's the frustration level I have, not of the process. I realize there'll be additional dollars if we approve this. Believe me, it's not so much the money, it's the process, and that's the thing that bugs me on this thing, and I guess I've got a blind spot on it, so I apologize. I've said enough.
Very, very good point. You had a question over here?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to give suggestions, since this follow-up meeting is not on the calendar, I would like to suggest that we continue this item with specific direction to city staff, that I would like to see a scope of work for this additional money. Right now, it just says a presentation, but it sounds like there is much more that is supposed to happen with some additional dialogue, some additional deliverables. I'd like a scope of work against this, rather than just saying $3,000 for a presentation. That would be my suggestion, on looking at Mr. Griselli to see if that might address some of his, some of his concern about.
Actually, it doesn't. It doesn't, it doesn't at all. I appreciate my colleagues trying to get them all this, but I, I mean, if it's $3,000 or $300, if it was $300, I'd be sort of having the same frustration, probably a little less, but it's still the frustration level of how this goes. So I've said my piece, I think we've beat this horse. I'd listen to a motion if someone wanted.
I move approval of consent calendar items seven H.
All second. Okay, first and second, Ro call?
Councilmember Ramon.
Yes.
Councilmember Griselli.
No.
Councilmember Grocott.
No.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
Mayor Roy.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for your time, Jim. Thank you. Very good point, Mr. Griselli. Very good. Okay, we're moving on to reports to council. We have two items, and our chief fire is going to be covering both. One's consolidated fire prevention fees, the second one is our radio requirements. So let's, again, back to eight A, strategic update regarding consolidated fire prevention fees, technology evaluation, and performance measures report. This sounds good.
Well, it was thick. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Before you have given you a report that was presented to the fire department from management partners and associates, as you recall, back in the fall, and I'm repeating myself a little bit, for the two fire board members have seen this already, but Mello Fire, Redwood City Fire, ourselves, and San Mateo Fire all hired a consultant to come in and give us an opportunity to look at best practices and some opportunities to standardize our fees, standardize our evaluation process, and essentially make sure that we were doing the same thing across the board, so that from city to city, the impact would be the same as we, as we move forward with some of these things. And also give us an opportunity to look at some other opportunities to do some things. So I presented that report to you. Currently, at this point, it is information only. We have already approved our fees for the next fiscal year, but it is something that we can certainly discuss mid-year, or even in the future with whoever the organization may be that'll be doing future fire services. So I think it's something certainly that is good to have in our, in our back pocket and be prepared to deal with that in the future, but we have, across the board, done a standard increase with our fees already. So I'm happy to answer any questions you may have in regards to that.
Mr. Mayor? Any questions on eight A?
Chief, I just wanted to bring this up, it was brought up at the fire board level. The recommended fee, if you take all of those, and you take all the base fees, the recommended fee is actually higher, so we will be receiving more money by going to this model.
Correct.
Okay, that was it.
And chief, I assume the process would be that when and if this is discussed at, will we go to the fire board first, and then come to both city, both San Carlos City Council and the Belmont Fire District?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it will come back to you for your authorization of the rule, as a major decision.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on this item?
No questions, just.
Okay. Moving on to eight B, is the strategic plan update regarding FCC, which is the Federal Communication Commission, radio requirements of narrowbanding.
Again, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sounds like my son's going to be talking to me here.
Right, yeah, it's all, as a matter of radio talk here. As you're aware, the Federal Communications Commission has warned that agencies that are within a certain frequency range, reduce that range or make it narrowbanded, so that it gives you opportunity for more frequencies to be used. This is all of a, part of a broadband piece with cable TV and some certain television companies, and so with that being said, we knew that this has been coming for a few years. We've been moving forward in this process. Our radios in our vehicles are currently what we would say analog, they're not digital. They were put in all those vehicles in the late 80s and early 90s, so they do not meet that standard. But we have received a grant for 100, right around $100,000 to replace all of our mobile radios and portable radios in the vehicles, and our anticipation has moved forward with that. So essentially, I want to let you know that we will be meeting that standard across the board in the department, and with other frequencies, and in relation to other agencies that are around us, so that we'll have, interoperability piece will be covered through, through this changeover.
Okay, good. Questions on nine, eight, I'm sorry, eight B?
Chief, a quick question, what happens to the old equipment?
Well, it will still work, but the people that are in the digital phase won't be able to hear it, so you'll essentially be talking in the dead space. So we'll surplus that out, and other agencies, you know, use it for other things like ranger units, some close person-to-person signals, they'll be able to use it for that, but from the fire ground or emergency response piece, we won't be able to use them anymore, so we'll make sure that they get surplused and get used correctly.
Are there organizations like Red Cross or something that could, you know, I mean, rather, as backup, are there some organizations that could really be used?
Yeah, the ham radio operators, some of the dispatchers, we have incident dispatcher teams that respond to larger-scale fires. They can monitor, they can transmit, they'd be able to hear a lot of that information. That would be the benefit of them having those radios with those frequencies still in there. They just won't work for us as far as for emergency response, for us to communicate across the board.
Actually, chief, no, I'm just kind of curious, I mean, in terms of the surplusing, has there been any discussion about using these now-surplus radios with our CERT volunteers or looking at ham operators in San Carlos?
I am going to do that, actually, I'm glad you brought that up. My plan was, what was really, the radios that really still have some time left in them that I'm not having issues with, I was just going to bank them in a charging system and have them available for a larger-scale disaster, so that we could issue them to some of the CERT members to monitor in the event of a disaster, if something comes up into play. So my plan was to kind of have some here, and have some at the two stations that we've designated as locations that CERT members will respond to in the event of a disaster, so they can go ahead and get them and check them out.
Great. Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, just one other comment, it may not apply to this equipment, but on occasion, I think, when we retire things from the department, you know, if you ever go over to the history museum, there's things over there, old police radios and things like that, that tell a story. And again, it may not be the case with this equipment, but on occasion, I think we ought to think about the history museum here in our own town as a, as a place for some of this stuff to go.
Great thinking, great thought.
Yeah.
Keep that in mind.
Yeah. It is history.
It is. It's a part of technology that we won't see again.
Good. Okay. Anything else? Okay, moving on to.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Our public hearing, item nine, one item, nine A, this is consideration of resolution authorizing adjustments to the cost of services, schedule user fees for 2010, 2011. Just let the public know, we review our fees on an annual basis, and this is our time. Mr. Mulby?
Good evening, all of the mayor, members of the city council. As the mayor was just saying, typically, about this time of year, we bring forward the city's fee schedule, typically just after we adopt the budget. This year, however, the budget's on hold, we saw no reason to delay the fee schedule. As you may recall, last year, we had hired the firm MBS to work with us prior to this time last year, when the fee schedule was adopted. We worked with them for about six to eight months at the staff level, completely revamping and studying our fee structure for the city before those recommendations came forward last year. Some fees were raised, others were actually reduced through that process. Some stayed about the same. During that process, built into the study itself and the recommendations, and the ultimate decision that the council made was to approve a plan that had built-in escalator related to the cost of living index, the CPI. This year, that rate would be 2.4%, which would be the automatic increase. In addition to that, we've had all the departments look at the fee schedule to make sure they felt it was still appropriate. There are a few, I think, three or four different fees in the Parks and Rec area that were created new. We have gone back and talked to MBS about some of these and some of the other fees and issues we've had during the course of the year, so our relationship with them continues. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the process. In addition, the department directors are here to answer any questions you might have about, be specific to their department.
Okay. I thought maybe what we would do is, I get public comment first, and then maybe we would hit these by department, or, you know, admin, public works and so forth, one at a time, and kind of go through them by topic there. Fair to everybody?
Great.
Okay. Okay. So public comment, do you have a speaker card? Pat Bell. Pat, welcome. This is on our user fees.
Yes, this wasn't available to me until this afternoon, the, something, it got lost on the server or something, so I just went through it very quickly and saw a few things that bothered me. One is, Parks and Rec charges $100 an hour for Parks employees, who are mostly men, and $75 an hour for recreation staff, who are mostly women. And I think we ought to look at how that shakes out. You know, it's true, all over the country, that women make about 77 cents for every dollar that men make, and this is just, looks on its face like more of the same. In the permits, it appears, if I'm reading this correctly, that to build a pool in my backyard, I'd pay $92 for a permit. To build a 10-by-10 deck at $30 a square foot would cost me $3,000 for the permit. And you're not supposed to charge more than it costs you to do the job, so I want to know why it takes $3,000 worth of time for a permit for a 10-by-10 deck versus a swimming pool that has all those layers of engineering, and you've got to spray the cement right, and you've got to have the right supports under the cement, and yada, yada, and I assume it has to be inspected more than once. Noise ordinance, we have a disturbance, if there's a, so police have to go out twice for a disturbance, they're going to charge the disturbers, but we don't have anything for repeated barking dog violations. And the people whose dogs bark all day, every day, and disturb the neighbors over and over and over and over, there's no recourse for the neighbors, unless you want to sign your name and tell the neighbors who it was who complained, and then it can go to the city attorney, and he can write them a letter, and blah, blah. I think if they have to go out there repeatedly, and I don't know what the threshold is, twice in one day, three times in one week, whatever, they ought to pay a fine for the police officer's time. These are sworn officers going out telling people, you've got to get your dogs trained, so they don't bark all the time. If it were more expensive to pay the fine than it is to train the dog, maybe they'd train the dog.
Pat, if you could wrap up there.
Okay. And the city council newsletter, at the moment, costs a citizen 25 cents a page. If that were on the website, it would be, I'd like to see that in the category of free on the website. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anybody else like to speak on this item?
Move to closed public hearing.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Callers and table? Aye. Opposed? Okay. So let's start off, and any clarification any of the department leads want to make on any comments made there, it would be welcome to do so. Let's go through administration fees, which goes through, this is actually page one and two. Any questions or comments to staff? And that would probably be Mr. Mulby or Christine Bullwood that would answer those. Any questions?
Nope.
No questions? Okay. Moving on, this would be now to, excuse me, the community development, which is planning and building. Any comments or questions, recommendations?
For planning and building?
Sure. Mr. Gocat?
I don't know about questions in terms of, you know, detail things, but I suppose I stop you here, because it's something that I'm, an area that I'm more familiar with. But even just the idea of increasing fees right now, whatever percentage, to me, is a bit of an, it's a negative, because, you know, in the industry that I run around in, architect fees are doing just the opposite. That's why I asked the question about the, that's why I pulled out one item, is find out what staff's thinking was on that. They're saying, well, the market is flat to down, you know, we won't be able to lease this space, et cetera. Well, the same thing's going on in the building industry. In my industry of architecture, you know, unemployment in California is around 12%. Architects is around 25%. Architect fees are dropping, and it's because of the economy. And here we are, talking about raising fees in this industry. I don't think we should be talking about raising fees in this industry. I think we should be talking about leaving them flat or leaving them alone. As it is, I can tell you, from my experience, like with, you know, the design aspect in residential, it's not uncommon for me to bring a project into the city for an addition or remodel on a home, and the fee that I've already charged the homeowner for all of my design services is equal to what the city will charge me for review of that project and going through the design review process. And I question, what are they doing that, you know, it took me that much time working with my client, with client meetings, measuring a house, coming up with a design review? What the heck is city staff doing that their fees are equal to mine? Or maybe, you know, I guess someone could argue I'm not charging enough, but if I charge, already I've lowered my fees just to keep the, you know, keep my drawing board busy. So, you know, what's going on here? I guess, you know, to summarize, I just, you know, I'm not going to look at every fee and ask us to look at every fee and, you know, maneuver it around that way, but to even think about raising these fees in community development, whether it's building or planning, I just think's inappropriate.
Okay. Other questions, thoughts, comments? So I'll make, actually, Mr. Gocat, just to give you a little input on your comments. I actually agree conceptually, and actually in the business world out there, I think some fees, the question is, why raise? Why isn't it flat? In some cases, it is down. I think what we're learning in our own organization is that our costs are still escalating. If I could talk about one item, retirement, we know that that is, in the whole state of California, including our city, a significant reason why our costs continue to rise. And we are actually, on council and staff, doing a good job in lowering our costs. You know, we initiated action a month ago on a park and rec maintenance program that has significant savings, savings of two-thirds of our cost. It's going to cost us to outsource that one-third. But many, many other, and significant areas of cost containment and cost control, we've been talking about, but we haven't initiated yet. We are in process, but it's going to take time. And so if I look at, just not looking just at planning or building specifically, but generally, our costs, we are not at the point where our costs are decreasing yet, and retirement's a big number in our cost structure. So that's why I feel that maintaining costs flat, it's really based on what our cost structure is, and our cost structure, the good news, is going to be changed, but we're not there yet, would be my reaction.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
To add on to what you said, we've sat through all these public meetings where people have talked about maintaining the city and wanting to help out, one of the common themes is, even though it flies in the face of a tax measure losing, everyone said they're willing to chip in a little more. I don't think it's too out of bounds to ask for 2.4% more when it comes to our fee structure. I don't think it's that much. And I understand, it's tough, you know, the private sector is cutting back, they are cutting costs on certain things, some things they aren't cutting costs on. And I just don't think we are in the place where, as a government, we can not ask for more right now. We need more in order to keep doing what we're doing, because our costs will continue to rise. We don't have the same luxuries that the private sector does, as to some of the things you spoke to. So I'll be voting in favor of these fees, and I don't even think we need to go through the rest of them.
So with that, any other comments on the development, community development, planning, building? So next, I think we have about a half a dozen areas here. I believe Park and Rec is that, hold on. Community development has quite a few pages here.
Park and Rec's next.
Yeah, let me just get to it. Make sure I don't miss anything. Okay, we're on to Park and Rec. Any questions there? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question about youth baseball, that there are no permit fees against junior magia, Little League, Pony and Colt, and those are staying at zero. I just wanted to hear a little bit about why that's a zero fee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Doug Long, Parks and Recreation Director. This is following the longstanding tradition of the city to offer our fields to our residents for no cost.
So I guess, let me just follow up on this. Again, just let me get the youth baseball thing. So the league doesn't pay a fee, but there is a per-player field use fee?
Per player, for, yes, and the reason that came about is because of the discussions of replacing synthetic turf and the associated costs with that, and we'll experience in about eight years. And we had a conversation with the leagues about a user fee for replacement costs, and they wanted to expand that fee to include improvements at other fields as well. So we set these rates that would at least cover the replacement costs that we anticipate in eight years for the synthetic turf, but also capture enough money to do additional work as needed at other additional ball fields.
So again, the wear and tear that these leagues will be putting on the fields is being captured in the field use fees?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Doug, if you could just step in, Mr. Long. I have one question on block parties. So there's about a $150 fee, less or more, depending if it's repeated every year and so forth. So what services do we provide? Like what's involved in court? I know they fill out an application, but what do we provide for someone who has a block party?
Well, we do the permitting, which is, you know, in a process of letting...
Paperwork.
Exactly. The administrative process associated with that.
Yeah.
And if I am correct on that, we allow them to block off a certain area that precludes traffic from going through, that it's neighborhood traffic that's allowed through during that particular time.
Okay.
And the streets are identified, they're limited to certain areas within the city to be able to host these, that can accommodate that kind of traffic.
Okay. So my experience, we have an annual block party, the people up the street have it. I know they get construction barricades or one of those...
That is correct.
Saw the horses?
Right.
From, you know, a paving company or a contractor that has them, sets them up on either end. But they do do that, so we're really charging for the paperwork and allowing them to close off traffic. So there's an approval process, a time going through the permitting process. I guess where, my question is, is if I think about Park and Rec in our city, building community, building neighborhoods is another important aspect. And my other issue is, when people do get in a block party, one of the things they talk about is, hey, the city's charging us $150 for a permit, and we don't get anything for it. Do you have any concerns on just the goodwill of just eliminating this fee, or just to encourage neighborhoods to have good neighborhood block parties? What do you think?
Well, I think there's a need to probably extract a fee from the folks that are willing to do this as a part of an administrative cost that other neighborhoods don't have that benefit of, you know, offering this type of party, so it's unique to their community. If you recall, Councilman Gocat also had an issue with this when we suggested to raise the fees, and he had indicated that he wanted to keep the fees low to encourage people to have these block parties similarly. So it's really at the council's discretion of what you would like to do in terms of these fees, but, you know, what staff is recommending is to...
Okay. I don't feel strongly, I just throw that out.
I agree with your sentiment, Mr. Mayor, but you could say that about half of these fees. We charge $10 per hour per court for tennis, but if they're playing during the day, what are they actually paying for? So, I mean, you could say that with a lot of this stuff. I rented a picnic site, I think it was $78, and it's just the price you pay.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Park and Rec? The police department? Questions there? Public Works. Hi, Robert. Oh, you've got a question there. Mr. Gocat?
I have a fee I was looking for, and I couldn't find. I got asked by a number of businesses when a notice went out about a fee to use the half of the sidewalk up to the brick demarcation point, and apparently there's a fee that's a flat rate for everybody, and I heard two complaints. One is, what's the city doing for that fee? They don't come around and clean the sidewalk or anything. That seems to be up to the store owner if they want to have a clean sidewalk. And number two, why should a storefront with 15 feet of linoleum furniture pay the same rate as somebody like Town, who uses their storefront and more sometimes for theirs? Or not to pick on Town, but, I mean, a lot of the restaurants do that. They'll use their storefront, and if they can get away with it, even for a time, they'll go beyond their storefront. And yet, everyone's paying the same amount. And I had actually talked to the mayor about that particular fee when some of the store owners showed me the letter. I was surprised to see it. I didn't know that we had approved anything like that. And at the time, I told the mayor, I'm uncomfortable with charging the fee at all.
So if I could just clarify before I turn it over to Mr. Wild. I also had the same problem finding this, but I did. I can't believe I went through this thing three times. It's on page 77, under Public Works. It's under miscellaneous. It's third from the bottom of the large box. It's called sidewalk dining approval.
Ah, there it is.
It's 233 proposed to 239. The other information, I went back last year, and it was, and I think this is some of the concern from the restaurants, not that it was new, but it got raised significantly. It was $50, but this was one of the items last year that we put a pretty good pop on increasing from 2009 to 50 to this 233 now, 239. So it is there, but it's, I think it's still a good issue that Mr. Gocat brings up. I just wanted to make sure we knew what the numbers were, and it is here. Mr. Wild, here, thoughts on this?
Yes, mayor council members, Robert Wild, Public Works Director. As I understand it, what do they get for the permit? Is basically the processing time to issue an agreement. It is a one-time agreement that runs with the business. It takes, we assign a civil engineering technician to go out and work with the property owner to find, or the business owner, excuse me, to find where they can, what they want, where they can place it, they prepare an agreement, they bring it to me, I sign it. So it's just a matter of really that processing time. The...
So it's an annual fee, though?
No, it's a one-time fee, it runs with the business.
Okay.
And it's just that the cost associated with issuing that agreement upfront.
Oh, it's one time?
One time, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. There, it's not based on the benefit the business gets from it. You're right. Some businesses have a very small area, some businesses have a long area, and it's basically based on our cost to provide that agreement and execute that. I think we could, we could, if you wish to subsidize that type of activity, you could reduce the fee. I mean, the cost would have to come out of somewhere else, it would come out of the general fund, if you felt that that was, you know, an important...
Well, we could increase the fee.
You could. I mean, I think...
This would be the minimum, and then if, just not to pick on a certain restaurant, but a larger restaurant would pay more, a smaller restaurant would pay less.
Yeah. They certainly receive a lot of value from having that dining area, and this doesn't represent, this fee isn't based on that value.
Yeah.
Another thought that I had was that we should go out and check whether they're, you know, actually complying with the agreement. We don't have anything in the fee to do that. We don't, we could have an annual fee, but we don't right now. So council's discretion, how you'd like to go with that? I'd recommend keeping it as is, though.
Through the chair, Mr. Gocat?
I was going to bring this up to Mr. Wild later, after we approve this, because I think this would take more time, but I would like to see an annual fee, because I think there's been certain cases where people aren't obeying the rules of having outside dining. There's a lot of issues where people can't get by with wheelchairs. There's a lot of issues of low-hanging awnings that people are getting clipped by. There's also an issue of restaurants putting their tables in front of businesses that are closed for the night, and expanding their dining area on stuff that's not their property. So I would like, maybe next year, to see an annual fee, so we can actually have some enforcement about this. I've received numerous complaints about it, and I go downtown quite enough, so I know these are actually legitimate complaints. It doesn't go across to all the restaurants, but there are certain restaurants who are pretty well-known for it. So I would like to see this come back next year. I don't want to take up our time this year, and I figured it would take some time to figure out how to do that.
Through the chair, I'm looking at council. Would we be able to perhaps direct staff to bring this back shortly, that we may be able to look at this as an annual fee? Or do we, do we only get one bite of the apple this year, or could we bring it back shortly?
Bring the fee back.
And we don't charge an annual fee for use of the right-of-way to anyone else, at least not at this time. So I think it's a... So I think it's, and they are using the city right-of-way. I think that's another reason for having this encroachment permit, is it prevents anyone from just camping out on the sidewalk and setting up a restaurant like a hot dog. We've had the hot dog stands in the past that have come in and want to be in a corner, got to get an encroachment permit. And it's the same with the restaurants. So I think it's something staff could look into, see whatever, see what other cities are doing with respect to sidewalk usage, just like street usage. It is the city's right-of-way.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Gokat?
So I suppose, you know, if we wanted staff to work on this, we could pull it out. But the thing that I would prefer is something that's more along the lines of, you know, there is sort of a typical width to storefronts in the downtown, and then there are some businesses that are multiples of that increment, if you will. And I would rather see a fee that's a bit lower if it's a, I understand what Mr. Wild was saying, I would prefer just a one-time encroachment permit, which I suppose this is on the order of. Something that's a little lower based on, I think they're about, I don't know, 30 feet wide, typical storefront, but then you have businesses like Town and some of the restaurants that are, like I said, multiples of those, rough multiples of those numbers. And they would pay based on their multiple more, because they're about three typical storefronts wide, or two, or whatever it is. And beyond that, I would treat it like, you know, I agree with Mr. Klein, there are restaurants that, the other day, I walked in front of Pia Cherie's, and I'm short, you know, and I had to duck to get under the awning. And, you know, sometimes businesses push the limit. I think on a complaint basis, if you have to go out, if your guys have to go out, then you hit those who abuse the program, but you don't hit everybody. That's why I'm not in favor of an annual deal, because some places, like, you know, plantation, they have their tables out there, but they, you know, they mind to stay behind the line, and they're not a problem. But there's other restaurants that are.
I'm sorry.
So that would be my advice, that even if we need to pull this, go ahead and pull it, come up with some typical fee that's a little lower for a typical storefront, and then multiply it for bigger.
Okay.
And have it be once a year.
Since this is a one-time fee, I would recommend that we approve this tonight, and then we direct staff, as was mentioned, I'm just piggybacking, that they look at, I know Bowling game has outside dining, trying to think of some other places, I mean, Mountain View, Menlo Park, there's a bunch of cities. Palo Alto. Then hopefully with a few phone calls, I mean, again, you have nothing else to do, Mr. Wild, I know, but perhaps some administrative staff, who knows, might have a chance to make a few phone calls and get some information about whether there's annual fees or whether there's multiples, like Mr. Gokat says, so we get an idea of what other folks are doing, and then bring it back to us. But I would recommend that we just approve this the way it is tonight, and then we come back, and then we can discuss the annual fee or the, you know, increase incremental fee or whatever. That would be my recommendation.
So I have a thought here, maybe, I kind of, it's into what everybody has said already. I do, I am very comfortable that Mr. Klein said there are restaurants that do utilize and expand their capacity, definitely with space on the sidewalk. However, there are also places, and if you get the mindset away from a restaurant, if you think about, and I'm guessing that some of this, Shelby's Garden, I think has a little carriage with some of their stuff out in front. If you go by the antique store, there is something in front of it. If you go by Bay Area Bank, I believe, not all the time, but sometimes they have a table there. Home equity line of credit right now, 4.75 percent, and they have forms there. So each business kind of puts out a little bit of their product line in front of their store. And I've noticed, you know, the last month we've been on, you know, the news and on TV and walking down the street with reporters and them filming our downtown and what you see, I mean, it really adds to the quality of San Carlos. You don't have just storefronts. You have businesses that are providing services or products, and that one little carriage or whatever really represents, and it's really an attractive way, just like we decorate our homes and we landscape. And so if there's a way, I think for the new yogurt shop on San Carlos Avenue where the lightstop was, if they put two tables, it represents to me a yogurt shop. When you have a restaurant that puts, you know, eight tables, that's part of the business, and I see a difference there. So I would like to, you know, leave this as is. My only recommendation would be, and I know it's hard where you draw that line, two tables or, you know, that's the really difficult part. But I would like still to encourage the ambiance, the quality, the appearance of our downtown to encourage all our businesses, including restaurants, to, and it's going to cost you still to maintain it, you know, to control it, because people go crazy with it. But I think some outdoor features adds to us, and it adds to the businesses. So some way I would like to challenge you with a way to allow minimal usage of tables outside without charging anything, but I think charging the rest of them, I think we should, and annual fee, I mean, a one-time fee is a great way to do it.
Through the chair. Just one clarification, I think some of those businesses that you mentioned have an inset storefront. Some do, some don't, yeah. And so, for instance, the antique shop, I know sometimes they do have things that are out in the sidewalk, but oftentimes their merchandise is back inside their inset. And I think as long as they're behind the typical storefront line, then they're clear, in the clear. Is that right?
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, on that, on your point, the chamber's actually been adding a lot of value on this topic. We went to them, the Civic Liaison Committee, and when we did the outreach to the business, we heard some feedback, negative feedback. Went to the Chamber Liaison, Civic Liaison Committee, asked them to weigh in on the issue. They did a little bit of a survey of their members in the downtown and found a lot of interest in actually doing just what you say, trying to make the downtown a little more interesting, get people, drop people into the stores. As you say, it is a slippery slope. You, how do you, one man's interesting thing might be another man's junk. And so our intrepid community development director is weighing into that fray with the zoning ordinance update, in which this ordinance that says thou shalt not put displays outside except for flowers and dining isn't found in the zoning ordinance. And that's something that's going to take, get a look through this zoning ordinance update that's just being undertaken. So if people are interested in that topic, they should come to the listening sessions that are coming up. Those are really important. I don't have the dates and times of that, but.
Mr. Survey will figure out if we could do it or not, and you'll figure out what we're going to charge them.
That's right.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call the question on this item and make a motion if I could.
Sure. Any other questions? I think we've killed that horse here.
I'd like to adopt a, attach resolution updating to these cost of service and schedules proposed on the attachment, but I'd also like to add an addendum to that, that staff survey some of the local cities relative to the dining situation and come back to us at a date to be specified, hopefully within 60 to 90 days, and so we can have a further discussion on this.
Second. Okay, first and second. Questions?
Gokat? I need to do the resolution, Ms. Klein here.
57.
Resolution number 2010-57, resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos, authorizing amendments to fee schedule for certain city services, with the addition that I made.
Okay, want to second that again? Second.
Councilmember Maun?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Gokat?
I need to just clarify, I agree with what Mr. Grisilli just stated, but overall, as I stated in the beginning, the raising of 2.4 percent I'm opposed to, so no.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Mayor Royce?
Yes.
Okay. Now, item 10 is, we're moving to close session on both labor negotiation items. Mr. Winson, anything to add before we move? Okay. And we'll come back and adjourn here after the meeting.
Andy, in case you didn't see.
Thank you. I thought that was a good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thank you. 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 Thank you.